I want to have a moment of silence and after we have that, I'm going to ask Ms. Stoudt to come up and introduce her company tonight and help us with the pledge of allegiance. If you don't care. We're going to have a moment of silence first. Ms. Stoudt, please.
We have Kate Nigus, Isabella Nigus, Nina West, Brandon Dean, Thorn Bird, Jordan Cersey, Cameron Farmer, Alan Farmer, sorry, Emeline Armio, Harris Warner, and Cameron Farmer.
I put a allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to put 12 if we've got going over insurance premium for 2024, 25, and that's on their superintendent report, and we'll label that if. So that's what needs to be added to the agenda. Does anyone else have anything to add to the agenda? No, I need a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion from Mr. Stoudt.
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Houseright. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, approval of our last meeting is April 9th. Y'all had a chance to look at our minutes from the last meeting.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we've got a motion from Mr. Houseright, got a second permission from me, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, approval of claims. You got a chance to look over reveals and stuff. You got any particular questions? Any particular item?
I'll say.
Got a motion from me, got a second. Mr. Houseright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Give Mr. Mead some papers where everybody has.
Yes, ma'am.
It's about air for the kitchen. I've made some phone calls today and this week about the air in the county, and every school except for two in the kitchen area has air conditioning. Twin Springs and Dunedin, I believe is only two that does not. And we have been told numerous times that it's going to be installed, and it's never been, it's not been done yet as of today. I was told at the beginning of the year that they actually had a unit and it would be installed, and we still do not have it. And I know that I decided to work in a kitchen, like I've put here, and that it would involve the heat because of the oven. You know it's going to get hot. But if you look at the pictures, you can see this morning at 6:30, the very first picture, it was 82 degrees in our kitchen. And then about 10 o'clock, when we was doing our cooking, it got up, it was over 90 degrees. And in August, it's been up in the hundreds. 105, I believe is the last one that we checked. So it gets really hot, and the problems that arise with that is our employees are getting sick and they're having to leave work due to nausea, headache, and to me, that's, they could have a heat stroke, and I would hate for that to happen. So that's why I'm here to speak for them and ask for some air in the kitchen. And also, our equipment, when it gets so hot, the condensation on it, it will leak out onto the floor, and there's puddles of water, which kids, teachers, anybody could slip on, and that's a safety hazard. And it's a health violation to have it that hot too, because if it's, they want us to run fans, and we're not allowed to run a fan in a kitchen due to it blowing the dust and the hair, you know, because women's hair, it's going to come out. I don't care how you try to keep it, it's going to come out. And we've got our food out, and it can get in that food, and I would hate to be serving our kids something with that in it and then get it, because to me, that's, that's just nasty. Let me see here, what else have I got? During the summer months, when we're not in school, I've been told, and don't quote me on that, but I've been told that the air is completely turned off in the, in the school systems. And when you do that, that causes more heat, and in our dry area and on our coolers and on our freezer sections, it gets mold. And we have to come in in August, and we have to clean the mold before we can even start getting ready to serve our children. And our canned food has mold on it, our boxes get mold. And when the heat is there, that's causes for roaches to come in, because they migrate to the heat, and then you get a problem with roaches, which we dealt with this year, but I think we've, they've got it under control, there's the winter coming and the bug guy coming and spraying. And we're also getting ready to have a USDA review. And as far as I understand, the last time they were here, they had told them that our storage unit for our dry storage needs to be 70 degrees and below, according to the, to the USDA standards. And if the air is cut off at any given time, you're not going to be below 70 degrees, and your food is going to burn, which causes, you lose your product. We've had to get rid of the product because of the heat. We've opened apples in cans, and they would be sour. At the time, I didn't think about what it was, but it's the heat causing that to happen. So we're losing product, and workers are becoming sick from it, not major sick, but you shouldn't have to get sick going to work. But I would just ask that you all would consider giving us air, or whoever we have to talk to, to get the air in the kitchen, and for the whole school, for the air not to be turned off, because it affects a lot more than just our food and stuff. It affects your building, because if you turn the air off at night and come in the next morning, kick it on, it's got to work 10 times more to get it back to the, the temperature that it should be. So you're working that system more than what it should be. And I think that's about all I've got to say, but one thing, I got a call right before I left work, I had this printed out, and I was planning on coming, so I still decided to come, but I got a call, and Mr. Ferguson has said that he is going to take care of this air problem for the kitchen, and I wanted to make sure everybody did that. But he, he had thought that it was already taken care of, so it's not on you all, and I appreciate you, pal.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else wish to address the board? Move right along. The next, next item on the agenda is 2023-24 Winter Academic Sports Resolution for State Participants and Winners. And we'll hand that over to Ms. Ferguson.
Good afternoon, or good evening, rather. At this time, we do have several individuals we want to recognize for placing in state competition, or at least participate in state competition. You know, our students excel in a variety of sports, as well as other Virginia High School League competitions. And I'm just going to go by high school and ask each of these individuals to please come forward. From Twin Springs High School is Manny Piercy with us. Let me tell you a little bit about Manny Piercy. She's going to get embarrassed, and she's going to smile real pretty, but that's okay. Manny placed third in the region, and third in the super region, and third place in the Virginia High School League State Original Oratory Competition. That is mouthful, they're full. I can't even talk myself. It's a mouthful. And so we have a resolution to recognize your participation, and I would guess that is in forensics.
Yes.
And you did an outstanding job. Many times, our students are all by themselves, and they're sitting in front of strangers that they have no idea who they are. So it takes a lot of courage, encouragement to get up there and speak and do what needed to be done. Congratulations on the third place.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
From Gay City High School, we have Jayden Carrico, Gunnar Garrett, Emerson Brown, Bella Kozart, Morgan Stanley, Ian Stapleton, and Garrett Wallace. I don't think we have any of the individuals here. But if you will, please bear with me, I want to recognize each of these individuals. Jayden Carrico, Carrico was recognized as first team Mountain Seven, first team Region 2D, and second team All-State in girls' basketball. In boys' basketball, Gunnar Garrett, he was recognized as Mountain Seven Player of the Year, Region 2D Player of the Year, and first team Virginia High School League Class 2A All-State. Gay City High School Forensics, Emerson Brown participated in poetry. She placed second in the region, first in the super region, second place in Class 2 Virginia High School League State Competition. Bella Kozart and Morgan Stanley participated in the Serious Duo Interpretation. They placed third in the region, second in the super region, and first in the Class 2 Virginia High School, Virginia High School League State Competition. Ian Stapleton and Garrett Wallace participated also in the forensics under humorous duo interpretation. They placed second in the region, third in the super region, and second place in the Class 2 Virginia High School League State Competition. If you would, let's give each of these students from Gay City High School. And now from Rycow High School, will Eli Stewart, Landon Lane, Will Rollins, Jay Bowen, and Logan Barnett please come forward. He participated on the Rycow, Rycow High School State, in the state forensic competition. And Eli participated in the original oratory. He placed second in Region D, first in the super region, and fourth in the Virginia High School League State Competition. Eli, I have a resolution here to recognize you and your achievements for the forensic championship. Congratulations. Very proud of you. Keep up the good work, okay? Let's give Eli a round of applause. It's my understanding that the other four gentlemen that we made mention of are playing baseball. We have Landon Lane, and I'll read their accomplishments this past year in football. Landon Lane was recognized as Cumberland District Offensive Player of the Year, Cumberland District First Team Offensive All-Purpose, Cumberland District First Team Defensive All-Purpose, Region 1D First Team All-Defensive All-Purpose. And he also received recognition from the Virginia High School League Class 1 All-State Team as First Team Defensive All-Purpose. Will Rollins was recognized as the Cumberland District Defensive Player of the Year, Cumberland District First Team Linebacker, Cumberland, Cumberland District First Team Fullback, Region 1D Defensive Player of the Year, and First Team All-Region. He also received recognition for the Virginia High School League Class 1 Boys All-State Team as a First Team All-State Linebacker. Jay Bowen was recognized as Cumberland District Defensive Lineman of the Year, Cumberland District First Team Lineman, Region 1D First Team Defensive Lineman, and for also receiving recognition from the Virginia High School League Class 1 Boys All-State Team as First Team Defensive Lineman. Logan Barnett was recognized as Cumberland District First Team Defensive Back, Region 1D First Team Defensive Back, and also a Virginia High School League Class 1A Boys All-State Team First Team Defensive Back. And we have a resolution to recognize these individuals as well. Now, I don't know if you noticed, but you came walking in. To my left over here, we have three pieces of artwork. Do we have with us Molly Sexton from Gay City Middle School, Crescendo Osborne from Rycow High School? Come on up. And the Lessequilla from Schumacher. Association. And each year, we bring representatives of Scott County's fine artists to compete against other individuals throughout the southwest region. And what I wanted to do today is recognize their part. We had the Art Extravaganza, Extravaganza a few Sundays ago, and from their artistic ability, they were selected to represent the elementary division, the high school division, and I'm holding the middle school division artwork. And I just want to show you what outstanding artists we have here in the county. It's beautiful. And we have a certificate here for Crescendo Osborne for participating in the Virginia, Southwest Virginian Spring Regional Four-Ar art contest I like to present. We also have Lessequilla, again, representing the elementary division, and the one that I voted, who did place second in the middle school competition, was Molly Sexton. And if you all don't mind, I would like to hang on to these pieces of art and hang them in the school board office until next year, if that's okay with you and your parents, because we're proud of what you do. Okay? Let's give these two a round of applause. I'm going to lay these over here, and please make all the pictures visualized. Our next agenda item, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Prinna Robinett. She's got some special education presentation for us tonight. Welcome.
In your packets, you should now, from the Virginia Department of Education, Special Education and Student Services, the local special education plan, which is presented once a year to you folks for your approval. If you will turn to page six of the plan. They start out by asking how our mission statement and our commitments ensure equitable access to participation in the project and the activity. And we simply stated that Scott County Schools' vision statement, every child, every opportunity, places direct focus on all of the students, and that our mission is, the mission of Scott County Public Schools is to develop lifelong learners who value, who value themselves and others and contribute to the community and our career and college readiness. They ask for barriers that we might have in Scott County that we need to overcome. The barriers are, we have some folks and children who are homeless, poverty is an issue, some drug addictions, and funding resources. If you'll turn to page seven. We went ahead to say that even though we have barriers, we treat all of our children equally, and we do not make a distinction between any child in our county. Scott County, I will have to say, is, and our teachers, our administrators, is a very loving county. We love our children, and we treat them all the same. They wanted to know about timelines, including targeted milestones for addressing identified barriers, and we said timelines would be determined by each individual situation. If you'll turn to page eight. Page eight, just for your information, for those of you that are new for the school board, we are mandated in special education to serve all children in Scott County. That includes any young man who might be housed at the Southwest Virginia Regional Jail, who is also identified as a student with a disability. I will say, over the last, oh, three to five years, they have not reached out to us for services because they are using the adult ed center, and they're having their young men down there work toward a GED rather than a diploma within our schools. Page nine, they wanted to know how the money was spent last year. Last year, we received $872,357, and it was spent towards salaries for, to partially pay 18 special education teachers, 12 of which were elementary and six high school. Of that amount, $5,265, I'm sorry, no, that's correct, was used for proportionate set aside. Proportionate set aside is money that we are required to set aside for any child that attends the Gay City Christian School. We had six children attend who was receiving speech services, so the $5,000, $5,265 was spent for a speech therapist to go out there and meet the needs of those children. We also used $30,000 for materials and supplies, which included Reading Street, Scott Forsman Reading Intervention Program, noise counseling headphones for a child who needed that, life skills activities, communication posters, testing materials. We purchased eight iPads, cases, and the iPads with wireless mouse, file folders, office chairs, sensory items, toners, speech assessments, office supplies, math and reading activities, letter cards, and magnets, and calculators. If you will turn to page 11. This year, we're proposing that the proportionate set aside monies for the children at the Christian School is to serve six children for speech services again, will be in the amount of $6,711.41. If you return to page 13. The narrative for the funds that will be spent this year, the total funds allotted for IDEA Part B, 611 grant funds for the 2425 school year, is in the amount of $887,028, I'm sorry, I am messing up tonight. $887,025 of this amount proportionate set aside funds in the amount of $6,711.41 will assist with the salary of one speech therapist to serve six students at the Gay City Christian School. Money's been earmarked to assist with the salaries of 18 special ed teachers in the amount of $662,233.59, and another $186,780 for employee benefits. In addition to that, $30,000 has been budgeted for materials and supplies. These funds will be used for technology needs as well as consumable materials and supplies for approximately 66 special education teachers and service providers. Another $1,300 will be budgeted for travel for one handled with care restraint trainer to travel to Nashville, Tennessee, which is a required annual training. And then she will come back and train all of our parent professionals, teachers and principals in the county. Page 14 is broken down by a line item. It's the same two years I gave you previously. On salaries, we'll be spending $662,233.59, also $6,711.41 for proportionate set aside funds for the Gay City Christian School. Employee benefits will be $186,780. Other services, such as the training, restraint training, will be $1,300, and materials and supplies, $30,000. So the total budget is $887,925. In addition to that, we'll be purchasing printers, iPads, two Surface Pro laptops and keypads. We will also pay for the restraint training that I had spoken to you earlier about. I need a vote for your approval for this budget, or if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those, but I need a vote of approval so that we can go ahead and send this budget to the State Department for funding for this coming school year.
Okay, so one of the Part B flow through an application for you?
Yes.
That's my approval?
That's my approval?
Uh huh.
An approval of local special education annual plan, Part B flow through the, flow through application, including for that.
We can move.
A motion from Mr. Sally, a second from Mr. Hood, all in favor. Closed, motion carried.
The second part of the grant that I need your approval on is for the preschool grant. On page sixteen, the funding is twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars to be spent on partial salary for one preschool special education teacher. In addition of that, four thousand is to be spent on materials and supplies. If you will turn to page seventeen, there again, it's broken down in line item form, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars for salaries, four thousand dollars for materials, the total budget is thirty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. And we also intend to purchase two iPads with those funds. And again, I need a vote of approval for the preschool grant as the budget is laid out.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll say.
A motion from me, a second from Mrs. Edmond, all in favor. Closed, motion carried.
The final part of the presentation tonight, each year, again, for you both, Senator Newt and Board, is from the Special Education Preschool 504 Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee. We're required by the State Department of Education to make a report to you once a year pertaining to needs and challenges faced by students in Scott County. We currently serve eight hundred and fifty-seven students with disabilities, sixty K through seven gifted students, and fifty-four 504 students, and another thirty-two preschool special education students. With your support during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, Scott County Public Schools has hired new special education teachers at Duffield, Schumaker, Nicholsville, Twin Springs High, and at the Fort Blackmore Center of Excellence. Scott County Public Schools also contracted to bring in three virtual speech therapists and a part-time school psychologist to assist with testing this year. Mr. Brian Dance started the transition from school to work program at Gate City High School year before last with assistance from the Virginia Department of Rehab and local businesses. Mr. Dance has been able to grow the program and implement exciting new aspects for our students. In the fall of twenty-two, there were four students involved in going out in the community businesses to learn valuable work skills with the assistance of a job coach. This year, that program has doubled with eight students over the age of sixteen, working in the mornings four days a week with the assistance of a job coach and an assistant provided by DARs, which is the Department of Rehab. The students are enrolled in a school's work program and are getting paid twelve dollars an hour. This provides great incentives for these students to pursue employment after high school. There are also three students from Mr. Dance's class who toured the Woodrow Wilson Training Facility this spring. The training facility provides training in different areas that students choose, such as manufacturing, culinary, food preparation, and health occupations, to name a few, to allow certification and assistance with independent living skills. Mr. Doug Dance has done a great job and we're very proud of his program. In looking at the needs for this coming year, this committee would like to recommend more classrooms at Yuma Elementary. There are at least four programs in one class at Yuma at the present time. There's special education, that teacher serves sixteen students who come and go throughout the day. There's a Title I teacher who has an equal number of children, a reading specialist who serves an equal number of children, and a speech therapist. Each of these programs serves multiple students. Special education alone, as I've said before, works with sixteen students. Each of those programs should have its own classroom, but they've run out of room at Yuma. Every classroom at Yuma is being utilized. In addition to the current need of extra room, there's also, there are enough children at the Fort Blackmore Center who need to return to Yuma and Winter City area. An additional classroom is needing to start a life skills class at either of the two sites, wherever City or Yuma to serve these students. Wherever City has the same issue, there's no more room. An additional classroom is needed there as well. A request is being made for an assistant principal at the Fort Blackmore Center of Excellence. When Mrs. Wood is called away, there needs to be someone there who can assist. Mr. Jonathan Sayers has stepped up to the plate, and when she's not there, he steps in and meets the need. Fort Blackmore would also like to look into the purchase of an IC truck to teach their students, fourteen years of age and older, how to operate a business as part of transition services. That is a requirement from the Virginia Department of Education. A request is being made for an additional special ed teacher at Schumaker. A classroom was added this year. However, if students are to be returned to their own schools from Fort Blackmore, another life skills class is needed. Hilton Elementary's teacher in the three-year-old program also serves students with disabilities as she's duly certified. A request is being made for another special education teacher at Hilton Elementary so that the teacher can focus fully on the three-year-olds. Scott County Public Schools has a board-certified behavior specialist who works with students at the Fort Blackmore Center. However, as our behaviors with our children increase across the county and other schools, it becomes more and more evident that another behavior specialist is needed to serve students in all schools. Therefore, a request is being made to hire another VCPA who would look at, so that we could look into the possibility of growing our own, so to speak. I would like for us to be able to look at our teachers and find out if there's anyone within our system who would like to fill that position and then assist that person to go back to school. A final need that has been identified for your consideration is to add a secondary part-time gifted teacher. Mrs. Maduka serves students in K through seven while also serving as assistant principal at Hilton Elementary School. Our gifted students leave the seventh grade. After that, they receive no direct services. Middle school and high school teachers try to assist and challenge the students. However, these students would greatly benefit from a teacher who could give them some direct attention. In summary, the Special Education Preschool 504 Gifted and Talented Committee is requesting the following. Additional four classrooms built at Yuma. Hire one life skills teacher for students returning from Fort Blackmore. Additional classroom built at Winter City. Hire one life skills teacher for students returning from Fort Blackmore. An assistant principal at the Fort Blackmore Center of Excellence. An IC truck purchased for the transition program at Fort Blackmore in order to teach those students fourteen years of age and older work skills. Add an additional life skills class at Schumaker. Employ an additional special education teacher at Hilton Elementary. Employ a board-certified behavior specialist. And employ an additional part-time secondary gifted teacher. So, this committee would like for you, honorable members of this committee, to take all of this into consideration in your planning for next year. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Edmond. Okay, I'm sorry. All right, next agenda item, this mental health grant update.
Hello, my name is Shawna Vermillion. I'm an instructional technology resource teacher. And along with another instructional technology resource teacher, two school counselors, and a school social worker, I serve on the core team for our school-based mental health grant. That grant was awarded last year, twenty twenty-three, and it will run for five years. The main goals of the grant, you can reference this flyer in your packet, are to decrease our chronic absenteeism and decrease the need for a credit assessment, in addition to hiring a few positions in the mental health field. What we would like to talk to you, what I would like to talk to you about tonight is the possibility of adopting a social emotional wellness curriculum for our elementary schools. And that's the other flyer that was in your packet. We are hoping for consistency and uniformity in the school counselor lessons with positive student engagement. We want to provide a safe and welcoming environment for all of our students and promote their well-being. So, tonight, we're bringing this Komochi's curriculum. And Komochi's is the Japanese word for feelings. And this curriculum focuses on teaching students to recognize their feelings and how to act on them appropriately. There is a link on the Komochi's flyer for you to preview that curriculum, as well as the full curriculum will be available for preview in Mr. Smith's office. So, we're asking that you would review that over the next couple of weeks and consider adopting that curriculum at the next meeting. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edmond. Next is, hand it over to Ms. Pam Aquilin, approval of K through five.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm here tonight to ask for approval for Savas Literacy Curriculum as part of the Virginia Literacy Act, which is in full implementation this fall in our K through five schools. Part of the Virginia Literacy Act, a huge portion of that, of course, is to adopt new high-quality instructional materials in K through five initially, and then the following year would be grade six to eight. I also want to let you know that the upcoming year is going to be quite difficult for our primary teachers because in addition to a new curriculum, they will also take the responsibility of many, many staff developments, the trainings that's required to do with the Virginia Department of Education, in addition to training for a new K through three literacy assessment, the former PALS, when I'll be calling those VALS. So, there's a lot coming on their plate this fall, so I ask for encouragement from you to them as well. But getting back to the main thing for tonight, we had a, we have a division literacy team comprised of Mr. Ferguson, Ms. Robinette, myself, two principals, and two reading specialists. And we have met monthly with the Virginia Department of Education representatives to learn more about the Literacy Act and to develop the Division Literacy Plan, which must be into the state of Virginia by July one. So, look for that next month, I'm sure in your packet as well. But within that, we then broke off and I asked Kelsey Taylor to lead the textbook committee. Kelsey is heavily trained in primary literacy. She has taken more training than any administrator, including myself, in phonetic awareness, any type of literacy, sentence writing structure, decoding. She is exceptional. So, she put together a very strong committee, again, myself, Reagan Mullins, we had administrators, reading specialists, special ed, we had representatives from every school. And we broke down the seven high-quality instructional materials approved by the state, and we started breaking those down and narrowing them down to where, within the last month, we were down to two. Two very, very good, strong curriculums, one being Savas and then one being HMH. I like to look at them as one's a Cadillac and one's a Porsche. And which one is the best suited for Scott County and Scott County students? When we convened our committee, they unanimously voted for Savas, which was a little bit shocking to me at first because I had heard such wonderful things about HMH. So, what the committee came back with is that we were looking at two exceptionally good programs. Either one would have been great for our students. But when you look at what one had that the other did not, one had at first glance a cheaper price. Mr. Ferguson, though, was very supportive in saying, we don't want the cheapest, we want the best. But when you look at something that is giving you something for seven years versus six, and it's over two hundred thousand dollars cheaper, that's a pretty good indication to look closer. So, we sent a team to Washington County, and they met with a school there that had been using HMH for the last five years. And what they noticed is that there were a whole lot of bells and whistles that were put on shelves and not used. And what the teachers there said is, we're not going with this program next year. We're going with something different. So, that was a pause for our committee. And then the final decision was made, I believe, in part because our teachers really, really requested in-house, strong professional development. We've come from a pandemic to where we've been very isolated from one another. And over the last couple of years, we've still taken on a lot of that training that we received of being successful virtually, but they don't want virtual training. And for over a hundred thousand dollars, that's what HMH is going to give us. But Savas will give that to us and come here in August for pre-service and do in tents, go through everything that we have, have the materials to us. And our teachers value that as much as dropping a Porsche. The Cadillac get us there because in the end, it's just as good. It maybe doesn't have all the bells and whistles that we're going to put on the shelf, but they support their decision with Savas. So, when we took the vote with those in our committee meeting, it was fourteen to two. Two representatives were not able to make it to that meeting. We asked for their vote after, so it made it sixteen to two. So, knowing all of that, I thought before you and I, ask you for approval for Savas Literacy for grades K through five.
I'll make a motion for approval. A second. A motion from me, a second from Mr. Hood, all in favor.
Thank you.
Closed.
No. I'd give some extensive looking at this, I've spent about a lot of time in school. And I'm not a professional. I also did research on companies. And of course, Savas is, I know that they narrowed it down, the committee narrowed it down to two programs. HMH, I don't know, there was something about it that I was, there was things that I really loved about what I saw in these educational materials that they sent in. The other thing with Savas is it is a product of Pearson Publishing, who has a monopoly on everything in the educational world. And Savas, and it also, Savas and SOLs are published by the same thing. It's just that you're getting repetitive.
A monopoly, I understand.
Yes, yes. And that's what I have a problem with, and that's why I would prefer, one of the reasons that I would prefer HMH. I also reached out to a lot of the teachers, and they spoke very highly of the HMH program. Various things was very important to them. And most of them said, yeah, we can do Savas. But a lot of them told me they loved HMH. And of course, like you said, other school systems that are using this are putting certain things on the shelf and they're not using.
Right.
And of course, that two hundred thousand dollar saving is, well, two hundred thousand dollar saving. But I look at this as such an investment in the future of the literacy of our students in Scott County.
And I can promise you, that is the way every individual looked at that curriculum. When you, when we first looked at HMH, it had a lot of bells and whistles. But when you got to the media, when you got to the phonetic awareness, when you got to teaching explicit instruction, it edged ahead. And in addition to that, our middle school science teachers use Savas. So, we had gotten great feedback on that. And what our primary teachers loved about Savas, we heard is that it does integrate maybe an older method of teaching that we see coming back in whole language, and really does put a lot of science into the literacy, which historically, we've, we're starting to struggle a little with our science and our science. You know, as a former science teacher, that's upsetting to me because I want to see that love and that joy of science. And we believe that this curriculum will enrich that as well. But I do, I respect your opinion.
And that is one thing that I would love to see kind of promoted in the county and classroom is, it's just simply learning, our learning state, the love of learning, intrinsic learning.
Yes. Yes.
Encourage that. So I would love to see that, that happen. More writing, more pen to paper, not keyboarding, more pen to paper.
And we've worked very hard on that over the last seven to eight years with our, with our writing.
I had a high school senior, very accomplished high school senior, who told me just the other day, she said she had received a congratulatory card from an older, an older lady. I guess I would be definitely an older lady. And when she opened it up, she looked at it, and guess what? She couldn't read it because it was in cursive. This child, this student is not a struggling, struggling student, that she could not read that card because it was written in cursive. I think that's something we need to do. All of our original documents from our founding fathers can't read in cursive. I think we need to, I think we need to work on that in this county.
And that's a skill that we do still work on in second and third grade of the teaching of cursive writing. I have been a very strong component of it. I believe there's neurons that are developed in your brain based upon the learning of cursive writing. But I do believe over the years, and I think this came before Chromebooks, before COVID, my children are now out of school. I mean, now have their children in school, makes me that age too. But they, they just, they, they would print. Print has become the norm with writing and...
And there's their signatures. Have you seen that child try to sign?
Oh, yes, his mother has bust.
Yes, yes.
I agree.
But I think more pen to paper in things like spelling, probably multiplication tags rather than fingers to keep.
And I assure you, we do that in elementary.
It is still, there's still a bit more. I've had parents look, and they say, "My student doesn't write spelling words anymore. They just look and spray them top of them." So I think we need uniformity across the, throughout our system. I think we need uniformity.
And I do believe the curriculum will bring that because it is law, and it is law that we use exclusively for teaching our students reading.
I do like the fact that these programs are K through five.
Yes, K through five, that was very important to us as a committee to, because it has been many, how many years since first, and we adopted three through five, because our teachers did not want it. They were adamant that they wanted to be able to create independently and very effectively. But now we will have more uniformity because it is a K through five, and they, they must use it.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Quillen. We've worked, for record, the vote was five to one.
Thank Ms. Taylor, when you see her, she did an exceptional job.
Thank you very much. Not long, looks like. Mr. Ferguson, we've got a few things to go over. Now I'll hand it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member of the board. In your package, you will see a two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Virginia School Board Association Policy Service Agreement. You have that before you. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to the, this document, I ask your approval as presented.
Motion for Mr. Hood?
Second.
A second from Mr. Sally. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I have, there is a literacy grant application. Potential gain of that, of course, is fifty thousand dollars. And I would ask, it is from the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching. It's a summer institute, see the dates, June the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. I ask your permission to make application for this grant. We'll keep our fingers crossed that Scott County will be the recipient.
I'll make a motion. Motion from Mr. Hasrath?
Second.
Second from Ms. Edwards. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have is the Head Start Financial Report for March two thousand twenty-four. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this document, I ask your approval as presented.
Okay, motion. Motion for Mr. Hood?
Second.
Second from Mr. Sally. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I have is the Head Start Director's Report for April two thousand twenty-four. This is for informational purposes. Does anyone have any particular questions in regards to this document? Also, we have the Community Assessment Needs Survey Flyer. I will share this with you. I don't think we have had approval for this for informational purposes. Does anyone have any questions in regards to this document? The last I have, just received a quote for our insurance for the school division for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I received this yesterday. And if you will notice on the cover sheet there, you'll see a comparison of the cost that the school division paid out for the two thousand, for this current school year adds to what the proposed amounts will be for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. It's actually a little bit less, which is a good thing, but we did have areas that did increase. They did a property assessment last October, if I'm not mistaken, with October, but last October, excuse me. Of course, as anything, prices continue to rise, materials, and you see the different types of coverage that the school division provides. Does anyone have any questions in regards to this document? And if you look through your document, you will see exactly what these monies go towards the premiums for, like, the covers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. All right. My understanding, we need to enter to a closed meeting.
Yes, the meeting is closed meeting to discuss candidates for performance and assignment performance of teachers, nurses, nurses, secretaries, custodians, maintenance staff, cafeteria staff, as provided in section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, A1 of the Code of Virginia, as a meeting.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.